Good evening. I would like to call to order the March 16th, 2010 Public Open Budget Hearing of the Milton Public Schools. Please rise and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to thank everyone who ventured out this evening. When we planned this date, we had no idea that half of our community would be drying out, or digging out, or going through their belongings in their rained-out, wet basements. So I appreciate those of you who are here tonight, as well as those who are watching it from home. I just want to give you the layout of this evening. The way this meeting is going to go is, as soon as I finish this, I will turn the presentation over to the superintendent, who will give a brief version of our budget presentation, and that will be followed by questions and answers and comments from you all. You have received cards, and we have received some questions via email. Some people have asked for those questions written in written response, which we have done, or will do tomorrow. And so if you would like to come to the mic, or if you would just like to turn in a card, and we will read the question and get the answer for you, that's how we will run the remainder of the evening. So if you have any questions at any time, don't hesitate to ask. So at this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Formley, Matt Gillis, and John Phelan to join us for our budget presentation.
Again, thank you for coming tonight. Questions you have tonight, or any questions you want to forward to us, we've received some outstanding questions, as Ms. Sheridan said, that we'll be answering via email and sharing some of those questions tonight. On the school side, I want to thank Dr. John Droda, the high school principal, for coming tonight, Masha Yaretzky, Tucker School Principal, both here to answer our school-specific level questions. James Jett was going to be with us, but he was ill today. Vern Nelson, representing the Milton High School, thank you very much, prior Milton Public School parent and site council member, math teacher at Milton High. John Phelan, Matt Gillis, and myself. This is the, we have a presentation that's online, a full-budget presentation, and all of the backup. So I would encourage those of you who came tonight, and who are watching this presentation, all of the detail, down to the salaries of all employees, all of the backup is online. If you have any questions, you can call our office, and we'll help you access that material. What we have tonight is a brief presentation before your questions, a presentation that we showed to the warrant committee. I want to bring you, I want to bring you, again, if you're sitting in the middle of the audience, we have demoed this, you'll be able to see this presentation. This is our FY-10 appropriation, $33 million. In October, at the special town meeting, to adjust the tax rate, the school budget was reduced by $110,000, thus giving us our new FY-10, that's the year we're in now, $32 million budget. $32 million is the budget we're working on for this year. Again, this is detailed, again, I bring your eyes down to the $32,976,000. Now, we were charged by the school committee, and by the warrant committee, to move the school system ahead, to move the school system ahead, and, again, teachers raises, and adding four teachers for increased enrollment, we proposed to the budget, we proposed to the school committee, a budget of $35 million. $35 million. That's the phrase, "level service." Again, moving the district ahead with four, adding only four teachers next year. We took that number, again, working with the finance subcommittee, the school committee, and the warrant committee, and we're going to describe to you these three numbers. You've all heard about the stimulus funds? Well, Milton Wells awarded $1.12, $1.123 million in stimulus funds. And in many school districts, those funds were immediately spent, on textbooks, when you wrote the grant, you had to divide the personnel that you were going to hire. One, were you going to drive achievement, or the other category, were you going to restore positions that had been eliminated? In the Milton Public Schools, we spent, I'll bring your eye down here, here's the $1.1 million. We used, so that we didn't have to eliminate two teachers, we used $110,000 of that money for our October special town meeting cut. And then, you see this $237,000? We purchased with that a kindergarten teacher, when kindergarten enrollment was high over the summer, and we wouldn't have had the funding for another kindergarten. Many of you in the audience are viewing, will remember, our third-grade numbers across town increased over the summer. We met with the Cunningham and Collycott parents, we formed a new third grade. We actually surveyed children's parents at the Tucker and Glover, we made a new third grade. The year that you began testing for MCAS, we thought that kindergarten and third grade were investments in Milton Public School children's futures. And, you remember the dialogue about seven to eight elementary classes that had enrollment over 26? We wouldn't have had the funding for that. We used this funding for those class-size aides. So again, the $1.1 million, take away the $110, take away the $237, you get $775,000. Again, moving those positions next year, we felt that we'd been conservative, the $538, so next year, we can put that towards the Milton Public School budget. In our kind of language, that was a savings account. We felt that we had been conservative with that stimulus money, we didn't immediately spend it. The majority of other school districts spent the money immediately. But now, we're going to have that money for next year. We eliminated the four teachers, all right, moving the system ahead, we're not going to add the four teachers for enrollment, and this $520,000 is sped stimulus. This is the description here of the sped stimulus, I'll explain it to you. Each, this year, $757,000. Those of you who follow the school budget understand that from the federal government, we're given Circuit Breaker reimbursement for special ed students, and the rate has gone down of reimbursement. So we are, the amount of money that we will reduce this year was over $500,000. So we used $500,000 of that sped stimulus to backfill the shortfall from Circuit Breaker. And then, with the remaining $200,000, we hired a half-term speech person, we hired a half-term adaptive PE teacher, and one other sped position, and some, excuse me, consulting services. So that money was spent this year, next year, we're getting the same amount of money. So again, level service, going ahead, $35 million. These, the $538, eliminate the four teachers, and the sped stimulus, bring us down to a new number, I call this $34 million, our new level service number. Again, counting every single dollar that's available to us. We take that $34 million, and we subtract what we're getting, our budget this year, and we're short $1,279,000. So that's the shortfall. So the school committee said to us, if you're only level-funded, if you're only level-funded, and you have no increase, and you've used your stimulus money, no new teachers, how will you get, who will you eliminate, what will you do to eliminate that $1.2 million to move the system ahead, so that you meet all of your raised obligations, and any other costs moving the system ahead? We meet as a leadership group, all of the administrators and our sped director, every Monday morning, I'm sure you've heard us discuss this, we meet with the finance subcommittee, Mary Kelly, Glenn Pavlicek, Chris Huben, and other members of the school committee often join us every Monday morning. All of this budget detail, we review, we brainstorm as a group. I go back with John Phelan and Matt Gillis to the leadership team, and we decided and made a proposal to the finance subcommittee and the school committee, who, how would we reduce $1.2 million to move the system ahead? Again, meeting all of our obligations, adding no new teachers, and we meet as a group. And over the years, those of you who have followed the school budget, again, 4,000 children, over 500 employees, years ago, we had a high school principal who really drove our leadership team to talk about bell-to-bell. So many of you remember Mr. Lovely sitting here, that one year, we were going to eliminate athletics and clubs. That principal felt responsible at the high school, as John Droda does, for what happens from bell-to-bell. And then, last year, as you can remember, we talked about restructuring the French immersion program, and the world language program in the Milton Public Schools. When we sat down as a leadership team this year, we said, we are going to look at cuts at every level, and we're prioritizing the teacher in front of the children. We're prioritizing the teacher in front of the Milton Public School students. And we met as a leadership group, we really divide the cuts, and I will tell you, the high school principal could do the elementary presentation, as the elementary principal understands the responsibilities of the high school. I'm going to go over this cut list with you. The Director of Guidance, a 1.0 position, I want to tell you that in this column, and we can put it on the web, we have the detail for every position. Matt Gillis, our new business administrator, he didn't, we didn't use a plug number, an average number, we actually detailed the person, and what their salary will be next year. And if I was going to bump out John Droda, we figured what the difference would be. So every position is detailed. The Director of Guidance, and what we've provided on the web, is an impact statement. Again, every one of these positions, as I said, and I don't mean to be trite, there's nobody who isn't working bell-to-bell, all day and beyond the day, in the Milton Public Schools. The Director of Guidance will impact services. But we looked at every level, administrators, teachers, aides, support people. Family and Consumer Studies Teacher, this is an elective at Milton High School, I've told the story. Dr. Droda came to me this year, and at the high school, he can speak to this better than I can, as questions come up, they're at the breaking point. In electives, and anyone who has a child at the high school, your child might not get there first, or their second choice, when it comes to electives. And there are caps in certain rooms, in the wood and auto, you have to cap the number of students, stations in the cooking room, you have to cap the number of students in that room, and then there are other electives that you can, as in phys ed, that you can have a higher number. Those are the two cuts that are anticipated, if we were to receive a level-funded budget next year. Moving on to the middle school, a classroom core teacher. At the middle school, John Phelan, having been the middle school principal, and again, working very hard with that team to get the Pierce School out of their AYP status, gives a great analogy. You cannot increase student achievement, what we all are working towards, and is required by this MCAS, when you're eliminating teachers, and when you're adding teachers, and eliminating teachers. We chose this core teacher, and because the tested subjects are English, math, and science, and social studies, at grades eight and nine, there'll be a combination of students. So again, this is the kind of analysis that we did. The Assistant Principal at the middle school is another anticipated cut. What we did this year was to make a reduction, and again, centering on student achievement, we're putting all our emphasis in the area of administration on curriculum leaders. And so the Assistant Principal role, there are two at the Pierce Middle School, one of them is going to be eliminated. Again, that will have an impact. Again, those duties are going to have to be reassigned to other individuals. People will say to me, as a parent, what will that mean to me? It will impact our get-back time, communication time, time with your children, if discipline issues arise. But again, we're, student achievement is primary, and that's where we concentrated our efforts. the elementary. Moving on to the elementary. In the elementary world, I have a chart, if anyone's interested, a superintendent did a survey, that at a certain number, schools have, of students, schools have assistant principals at the elementary level. And we're down to four elementary schools, the Glover has over 550 children, they have a half-time assistant. Within the last 10 years, we've had full-time assistants at our elementary schools, half-time assistants at every school. We're down to one half-time assistant at the Glover, that position is going to be eliminated. Elementary specialists, again, this is a .6 elimination, parents understand, this year, we have put back music, we took a position from the high school, physical education position, that was going to be assigned to the elementary, and rather than increasing the physical education, we kept it at the same amount, and we put back music at K-1-2. Again, again, it was a transfer of a teacher from a position, not an additional teacher. And so, again, we responded to the teachers, we responded to the parents, and that was bringing back the music, not to what it was three and four years ago, but a slight increase. This .6 elimination will bring all of the specialists back. Again, music for half a year for grades K through five, art for half a year. You understand, your children used to have physical education twice every week, now they have it once a week. The librarians, each elementary school had a librarian, now one librarian shared with Tucker and Glover, Cunningham, Collycott share a librarian. World Language Committee, I'm going to have John Phelan speak to this anticipated two FTE reductions.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Phelan, I work at central office with Superintendent Formley. I have been co-chair of the World Language Program Committee, that is made up of a co-chair, Gracie Burke, who's the Director of World Language, over 20 parents, teachers, and administrators in the Milton Public Schools. And the task that the superintendent gave us to explore was to see if we could reorganize how we deliver our world language programming to our elementary students, and to see if there was any cost savings in any way that we could reorganize and deliver that service. We were not to dilute or change the delivery of our French immersion program, or our FLESS program, we're very fortunate and value those programs greatly. But we did look at what we talked about last year during the budget season, which was some potential pairings of schools, or a continuum model, or a different configuration in maybe some of the grades, that may yield some savings, but keep the integrity of the French program and the FLESS program. After meeting probably over 10 or 12 times for two hours at a, per meeting, we surveyed our parents, we looked at all the data of enrollment over the last 10 years, we looked at the enrollment trends, student achievement data, every question that parents had, we explored. We are now in the phase where we have five options that we're reviewing, and the task of this group is to give those five options to the superintendent with the strengths and the weaknesses of each option. The goal is to provide flexibility and input to the superintendent's leadership team, to then have the leadership team decide what they feel is the best option on behalf of the school system and the children, and move that forward, and introduce it to our future grade-one parents at a meeting in April. I would like to commend the parents, and the teachers, and the administrators that have put in a tremendous amount of time on this committee. We look forward to the end result that we present to the superintendent in the next few weeks. Again, our goal, maintain the programs, we think world language is very important, review how we deliver those programs, to see if we can achieve any savings, but maintain the high value of the FLESS and of the French immersion. So we will present that information to the superintendent, and we will also present it to the public in early April.
And briefly, this World Language Committee came out of all of the discussions about the override last year, four Collycott parents wrote to me, they were all, I believe they were all Collycott parents, and they said, you have a responsibility to fiscally examine, further examine, some of those ideas you presented during the override discussion. And thus, that committee came about, because parents really drove it, and said, will you look further, is there any savings? So that's where really the charge came up, for looking towards, could we save two teachers? Again, still deliver the program, but was there any opportunity for savings? Excuse me. The, excuse me, the full-day kindergarten teacher. Our full-day kindergarten program has been a huge success, 340 current kindergarteners, 320 in the full-day kindergarten program. This is our second year of the full-day kindergarten program. The charge from the school committee was that we, it could not cost the taxpayer any more money. You understand that we get a grant for each full-day kindergarten class, and it's a tuition-based program, to the point that only for these additional kindergarten teachers does the school system own the insurance for the additional teachers and aides in the full-day kindergarten program. And working with the finance subcommittee, we're refining every one of those full-day kindergarten numbers, and we'll be speaking to some of the emails we've received from kindergarten parents later in this presentation. Again, John Phelan just spoke to the meeting with kindergarten parents, that's going to be April 14th, we're sending out an email tomorrow. We're going to present our world language information to the school committee at either their September 30th or April 6th presentation, and then we're going to go back to the kindergarten parents, so they have all the information before they make their decisions. Based on enrollment, the language-based program, a special education program, is housed at the Collycott School. Based on the number of students that we now have enrolled in the Milton Public Schools, with those IEPs that identify that program, we believe that we can eliminate 1.0 language-based teachers, again, that's based on enrollment. In the preschool, we believe that based on enrollment, keeping the class size the same, we can eliminate a .5 teacher. The ACE program, the ACE program is a .1, you understand how elementary students in grades four and five, until recent years, had two music periods a week, and they had chorus. The other night, this auditorium was full, with chorus groups from the middle and high. We don't have chorus at the elementary anymore. The ACE program brings together children similar to the chorus program, who are gifted and talented in the area of art for half a year, in grades four and five. Again, when we were looking at every single level, every single program, that's another cut that was put up on the board. Again, looking system-wide, we've gotten several emails, and we're going to address this issue tonight. We have full-time aides in the, in the full-day kindergarten program. Again, we look to reduce these aides to half-time, and strategically use them during the math and reading periods in the full-day K. That's a cut that we've gotten a tremendous amount of response from parents about. A data systems specialist, again, we've told the story that in the Department of Education, every child has a number, every teacher has a number, now they're tracing these MCAS scores, every one of your children's scores, their attendance issues, we report to the state, this person works full-time. Again, somebody else is going to have to do additional work, but looking at every level, administrators, teachers, support people, aides, we divided the cuts, reduced that position by .5. Classroom aides, we're looking to reduce classroom aides next year, again, this is going to be another difficult cut. Professional development, that number is $55,000. We have a professional development budget, we as a team looked and said, that's a teacher, we're going to make that cut in the professional development budget. ELE, English teacher, again, when children register in the Milton Public Schools, if their family identify as English not being spoken in the home, by law, those children have to be tested and provide services. We believe at this time, that we can make a .6 reduction next year in that program. We have a registrar, again, those of you new to the Milton Public Schools know that we have, and if you've followed the school committee meetings, we have, John Phelan has worked very, very hard on our registration packet, and the work we do registering families and children in the Milton Public Schools. As somebody said to me, Mr. Huben said the other day, well, people will be told, you can't come every day to the Milton Public Schools to register, we'll have to have established hours. Again, that's a huge process for those new to the Milton Public Schools. These units, lunch aides, and a full, another full-day kindergarten teacher, we're going to take .5 of our lunch aides, and one of our FDK teachers, and put them in a revolving account. Mr. Gillis will speak to that later. That's not a cut, that's a transfer of those funds into the revolving funds. The electricity reduction, why don't I have Mr. Gillis, or Ms. Sheridan? Mr. Gillis, do you want to speak to that $75,000 cut?
Sure. This past year, starting in July, we hired an HVAC person in-house, and we haven't had that type of maintenance since the school building project. And he's been working his way through all the buildings, and he's been finding, you know, fans and motors that were running that shouldn't have been, or that weren't set up and installed correctly. And he's been doing some electrical work, as well as we've taken advantage of, a couple of grants from NSTAR, where we only, we put in new, more efficient lights in some of our gymnasiums, and we've got one more of those projects to go. So we're cutting our consumption, just by operating our buildings a bit better, and trying to take some other in-house things, and we feel we can save that, that $75,000 that used to go to the electric company, we'll keep that in-house.
And our last cut is the elimination of a custodian. So totaling all of these eliminations and cuts would be 24.4 positions, if we were given the same number of dollars next year with no increase, using our stimulus funds and no additional teachers for increased class size. Does Ms. Sheridan, Mr. Pavlicek, Ms. Kelly, do you want to speak to the warrant committee session? One of you?
Two Saturdays, two Saturdays ago, the warrant committee had its all-day meeting to start the budget process for the spring town meeting. And based on their projections, they were able to fund budgets at slightly above level-dollar funding for next year. And their preliminary recommendation for the school department is that we would be funded at about $360,000 above level-dollar funding for next year. So that puts us in a position of being able to restore a certain amount of these cuts. That number's not final yet, there are other things going on. You may have heard that the, in Friday's paper, that the legislature is saying they're looking at a local aid reduction of 4% from the governor's original presentation. The good news in that is, the warrant committee built their budget, assuming that there would be a 10% reduction in local aid from the governor's numbers. So in fact, 4% is good news, and will possibly free up some more money for town budgets in the spring. Although, how much of that is going to go to operating budgets, or how much of that is going to go into things like stabilization, because, as you've seen from this, there's a fair amount of one-time money being used next year to plug some gaps, and would be prudent to put some of that money aside to, 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 to deal with the funding cliff, as it's called, that we're likely to hit for fiscal '12. So it's good news, it's not a panacea, it's not all going to rush out to departments and fix things. But the good news out of it is, the initial recommendation is that the zero-dollar over this year budget scenario is probably not going to happen, we're looking at more like probably an increase of $350,000, $360,000 over last, over this current year.
So that would take this, oh, excuse me. So again, this $1.2 million would be reduced by $360,000. I have to share one item with you. When we were at the warrant committee, and every department had to go up and give a presentation, and the warrant committee said to the school committee, and to the leadership, how you've prioritized teachers. Out of that 24.4, how many are classroom teachers? You said you prioritized classroom teachers, how many? We said- We said 7.1. They said, how much of the 1.2 million dollars are those 7.1 teachers? Matt Gillis had the detail and again, we can call it the detail and it came out to 415?
About that, yeah.
The warrant committee said, we're going to, again, as Mr. Pavlicek said in their preliminary attempt to, um, uh, to come up with a budget for next year, they said, we'll give you $360,000 to fund six of those 7.1 teachers. So for those of you who are new to this process, for you to understand, the school committee decides their budget. But again, working collaboratively with the warrant committee, they didn't say, we're going to give you X amount of money because we want that middle school principal at Pierce. Again, the school committee makes that final decision with the recommendation of the administration. They didn't say, put back every aide in the budget. They didn't say, you really need that custodian. Again, they're, they're, they do not make the final decision, the school committee does. We work collaboratively with the warrant committee and they heard and it spoke to me about citizens of Milton and Milton Public School parents. They said, how much would you need to restore out of that 1.2 million dollars, the classroom teachers? And they restored $360,000 or six of the classroom teachers. Again, all of this, as Mr. Pavlicek said, is a work in progress and the reason we have, uh, the public here tonight is to hear, again, ideas that you have to share this budget with you and what your concerns are. Briefly, before, uh, we turn the mic back over to you. Uh, this was John Phelan's question, if it doesn't fly, this was his idea. And so, we did the 10 most commonly asked Milton Public School budget questions and this is going to be on the web tomorrow. John, stand right up here and Matt. The first question, explain the use of stimulus funds. Again, um, Canton Public Schools received $40,000 this year. The Milton Public Schools, again, to meet the state formula, received that 1.2 million dollars, remember that we saved. Matt, do you want to talk to the stimulus funds?
Sure. Just to reiterate, reiterate a little bit what you heard earlier from Mary, it's one-time funds that we could invest in new programs to improve academic achievement or recover, uh, jo, uh, you know, jobs and, and things that were cut from the budget. Other than the kindergarten teacher and the third grade teacher that we added for class size and some class size aides, it's all going to be used to recover, um, lost jobs. And then we've got the, Mary can start going through the.
Next, what's the budget shortfall for next year? Again, Matt?
Sure. We, we have about a $2.5 million budget shortfall if we were to maintain the same level of service that we have now, i.e. keeping all the same people and having the same class size, which is why we added those four teachers. So when you subtract, um, 1,058,000 from the two, two buckets of stimulus funds we got, one bucket was because the state didn't give us enough money to meet the foundation formula and the other one is the, uh, special education stimulus money. And the last amount was the 219,000 for those four teachers. So we have a $1,279,000 shortfall in, in the budget process if we ought to be level funded.
And again, that's not, uh, figuring in the money if in fact the warrant committee money is, uh, finally targeted to the school budget.
So how many staff will have to be cut? Oh, okay. How many staff will have to be cut? What services will be lost or reduced? Superintendent Gormley, uh, just answered that question in a whole lot of detail, it's 24.4. Uh, full-time equivalencies, that means, uh, maybe more than 24 folks because we have part-time people that will be laid off, uh, during this process. We hope to in fact, maybe gain back a few positions if the warrant committee is able to restore some of those, uh, positions for us. And we do really feel, uh, that it's a very diverse, uh, balanced view of the system and the reductions, uh, represent that balance between administration, uh, limited teachers, uh, support staff, aides, uh, and custodial staff. You're the best. How many teachers are there in Milton Public Schools and how many total school staff? The answer is about 282 FTE teachers, about 486 FTE total employees and about 540 people. The reason why we use a lot of abouts is we have a lot of positions that are .8 or .2 or 1.2 and they're not all just bodies that all work full time. So we do have what we call full-time equivalencies, uh, of positions, not necessarily just people that have a whole full-time position. What is the average class size at the Milton Public Schools? The average class size from, is 21 to 25 and it will vary by building. The details are found on page 16 of the FY11 budget presentation summary available online. Basically, what we did, uh, at the request of the warrant committee and the school committee is we made a copy of the, uh, elementary student enrollment chart, which shows the exact class size of every classroom at the elementary level in all four buildings. We then published the Pierce Middle School teacher roster that had exactly how many students they have in every single class and we did the same for the high school. The only caution I give you as you go through that material is that there are a lot of scheduling, um, uh, the way in which the schedule programming works, it doesn't produce a very clean number for you. For example, it might have a class that says MCAS math, that's a class that's only built for 10 to 12 students. It shouldn't have 24 students in it. Uh, you may see, uh, certain classes that are supposed to have small class sizes and some courses that are combined. Honor Spanish and AP Spanish, maybe one classroom, one teacher combined to have 24 students. So we try to be very efficient about how we schedule our students. Um, so when you go through that paperwork, which is significant, it is every single classroom teacher, every single class and period that they teach and the exact amount of students in it. Uh, it is the raw data for you to review and look on your own.
And to Mr. Phelan's point, um, uh, finance subcommittee member, Mary Kelly is our conscience, putting all of this up on the web and we had a difficult time with all of the data and Sean Walsh, who works with us, was absent today. So tomorrow morning, when he's back, that will be up. It went on the web, it didn't work, but as Mr. Phelan said, I caution you, um, when you're looking at it, if you see a class of five, um, you have to, and John Drotta can address this, uh, levels are mixed. So if you have any questions, you can call Dr. Drotta directly or you can call my office. Matt? And again, these questions are actually all the questions we've been getting online and people who call the office. So we all met as a team and these are the most commonly asked questions. Matt?
So one of the most common questions we get is how do, how does our spending compare with other people in other school systems, especially our, our neighbors nearby and, uh, across the Commonwealth? Um, the, the state requires that we submit a spending report each year and, uh, when I created the budget, the FY09 data wasn't up yet, not everybody submits their report on time, but it just recently came out. So the answer most currently is for FY09 is that Milton spends about 87.9% of the state average per pupil. State average per pupil's a little over $13,000 and we spent about $11,400. Um, you know, and the, the Department of Ed looks at this in, in, uh, 11 different categories. And in every single category except for out-of-district tuitions, we spend below the state average. Although I've, I've got a little issue with the, with the state in that they take all the school systems combined and average that in. All the regional vocational technical high schools basically don't have any special education out-of-district expenses because they're, they're regions in. So they kind of skew the average for, for the rest of the, uh, city and town school systems. Um, next question, uh, what percent of the budget is special education? Common question. Uh, about 26% of our budget is special education and that serves about 17% of our students. Um, if that seems a little disproportionate with special education, we have kids that get individual one-on-one attention or sometimes we, we tuition, uh, a little over 50 students out to another school system to provide, uh, services for kids with multiple disabilities that we can't do in-house. Um, if that sounds like a lot, eh, you know, it, it is, but it might, it might be worth noting that just a few years ago, we had over 70 students going out of town, so we were paying those transportation costs and tuitions. We've brought them back in-house and it's the right thing to do educationally, socially and financially.
Excellent. What creative solutions has the school department come up with to deal with budget shortfalls? Uh, being conservative with our stimulus funds, implementing user fees for optional and/or voluntary programs, the in-house energy conservation measures, we were brainstorming the office, this is a sample. The Milton Foundation, uh, deliberating for a number of years as funding a half-time grant writer. Um, the first position, thanks to a lead from school committee member Kristen Bagley-Jones, was an adjustment counselor, a grant for an adjustment counselor that the grant writer wrote and successfully, um, was awarded. So we, we welcome leads from the community. Kay Bowles, Dr. Bowles, uh, communicated with us today, uh, earlier this week on a lead and, um, again, the part-time grant writer is following up on all leads. What are all of the activities and services that have user fees? Transportation, lunch program, athletics, clubs and activities, uh, pre-K and full-day kindergarten tuition, uh, tuition programs, summer school, SAT prep programs, driver's education, all fee-based in a public school. And what percentage of Milton High School graduates get accepted into two and four-year colleges? Dr. Drotta? 96 from the principal, 96% of the class of 2009. Ms. Sheridan, thank you very much for your attention. And again, all of the detail that we referred to on the web, this presentation will be on the web and all the backup and, uh, budget detail, and if you have any issues, you can call our office.
So I just want to add on to what Ms. Gormley just said, that our website is MiltonPS.org. That's MiltonPS.org. If you have any questions that you think of when you go home tonight or if you're watching this from home and you want to send those questions to us, um, please send them to L. McDonough at MiltonPS.org. That's Lisa McDonough's, um, email address and she's coordinating all of the questions for us. So, one other thing, we also have a copy of our budget for those of you who are not, um, online. It's available at the Milton Public Library. So at this time, I, I kind of walked around and asked if anyone had any questions written on cards. Oh, we have a couple here. So what we'll do, I'll invite the school committee members to come back to their seats. I'll, I'll read these questions. We have, um, Masha Yuretsky and John Drotta who are also joining us. Um, I'll ask these questions and if you would like to ask a question yourself, just raise your hand and I'll bring the mic to you and, and, um, we'll try and, and get to everyone tonight. So I'll start with these questions and see if anyone has any other. If we eliminated grandfathering, would there be meaningful savings by reducing transportation expenses? Grandfathering, I'm sorry, means those students who might go to a school outside of their neighborhood school, but maybe their siblings had attended that school. Is there someone that would like to speak to that?
You can. Um, grandfathering, for those of you who are watching, Ms. Sheridan just covered it. Um, four, five years ago, Mr. Lovely, this, we, when the schools were completed, we spoke to an audience the other night and we take a lot of this for granted. When the school building project was completed, uh, keep in mind, the size of the Glover doubled, doubled. The Tucker was actually made smaller. The Collycott was made larger. So we had to come up and again, the school committee, working under Superintendent Jafun with parents and teachers, uh, spent a tremendous amount of time coming up with a student assignment plan. It's online and it's working. And again, every single Milton Public School parent, no matter who they are, how long they've been here, when you sit down and you talk about class size, they understand the value of small class size and that's why the student assignment program has worked. People have moved into neighborhoods, uh, we've explained to them that the particular grade their child is going into is capped and we offer them one, two or three other schools to go and see and we provide the transportation. All done to minim, to keep those class sizes low. Part of the student assignment plan was that, uh, children who had, um, older siblings in a school could remain in that school. So the question is if we eliminated grandfathering, and I think it would be an interesting question to see where we are with grandfathering now because even the year we implemented, if you had a fifth grade sibling who was going into the sixth grade and then you were coming into kindergarten, we didn't grandfather you because the child wasn't going to be in the fifth grade. We know every one of these families, we go over all of this detail. So the question is, and, uh, Matt Gillis's first instinct is yes, there might be a savings, but that was part of our commitment. And again, it has to be getting towards the end, it's a good question for us to look to. Mr. Phelan?
Just to give people some background, we used to have 11 buses that ran, uh, for the Milton Public Schools and the buses do three, uh, runs a day. They start at the middle in the high school in the morning, then they go to the Cunningham and Collycott and then they go to the Glover and Tucker. We currently only contract nine buses. So with the student assignment plan, we, uh, and maybe for some other reasons that were unforeseen, we actually have been able to reduce our transportation costs in the last contract by two, uh, by two buses at the cost of, I believe, how much per year?
About $50,000.
So $50,000 per bus is a substantial saving. So I think that right now, given the, uh, way in which we were assigning students, uh, prior to the student assignment plan, we do have students that go to all four elementary schools that come from, uh, a good amount of the neighborhood. So the buses are already touching a lot of the town at each one of those runs. So I, it would be something that we can explore because if there is, uh, an ability to save money and coordinate that better, uh, then we would try to do so.
Thank you. Um, I just want to encourage people, if you have a question that you've written on a card while we're going through this process, just raise your hand and one of us will come and, and get it from you. Thank you. The next question says, how many students does each Milton High School guidance counselor now have and how many will each have after the guidance director is cut? And how will that impact college counseling?
Well, currently the caseload on each guidance counselor is probably, um, 270 students, 275 per counselor. Um, the shift will increase the number a little bit because currently the director does carry a small caseload. Uh, most of the impact isn't going to be, still be below the, uh, NEASC, the accrediting agency. If we go over 300 students per counselor, then we have kind of a, a significant issue to discuss with the accreditation board. Um, you know, we won't do that. The biggest impact is going to be not on the caseload, but on the extra services. You know, the nights that guidance comes out to explain the college process. Um, you know, the curriculum that's done and implemented will be carried out, but kind of the leadership and changes and adjustments, there'll be a lot of things that will gradually be impacted. But mostly, the biggest and the most immediate impact is going to be, you know, kind of the evening things that are offered to parents now. Those will be gone.
Thank you, Dr. Drotta. The next question says, could you tell us about the five options under consideration for the French immersion program? Uh, Mr. Phelan, could you take that question, please?
Sure. Last year during the budget process, um, the school administration had posed to have several options explored, one of which was the partner program. Um, the partner program would involve, uh, having two schools partner together to, um, work and assign French students who choose French immersion. For example, if, uh, I was a Glover parent, which I am, and, uh, I had five children, which I do, and one of them was going to go into the French program, um, in year one, that French program for Glover and Tucker students may be housed at the Tucker School. That means that my child would be in the Tucker School for all five years of his elementary career. I could have another student, another child who does English. That child would be housed in my neighborhood school of the Glover School. So that partnering would only be done for the French classes and they would alternate each year. So in year one, the French immersion students from both Glover and Tucker would go to school with Tucker and remain there. And in year two, the next first grade class coming in would be housed at the Glover and they would alternate sites. The same practice would happen for the Cunningham and Collycott parents and students as they would share the French immersion classes in alternate years as well. The next option we had was the continuum plan, which is a very different way to organize, uh, the French program, but also keep the services together. We were going to organize the entire district by placing all the students in one grade who took the French program at one school. So for example- So, for example, all first-grade French students, no matter where they went to school already, would go to school at one school, as exemplified by, say, Glover. All second-grade students, no matter where they went to school in first grade, would be housed in one school, and that may be the Cunningham. And we would, each grade would get a school, and they would stay in that building. So, the continuum name is because the first grade, each year, would start in a building and stay in that building, but it would alternate and run through all six buildings. The third plan that we had in store for possible review was to have a lottery or a cap system. A lottery system would mean that anybody who wanted to take the French immersion program would be able to put their name in a lottery. There would only be a limited amount of spaces in a limited amount of schools. Every school would have a limited amount of classes, and if their name was pulled, they would be able to take the French immersion program at their school or at one of the elementary schools. By the term "cap," obviously, that would mean that we would dictate how many spaces would be available, and in some years, the enrollment may surpass how many seats were available. If there were, say, 150 seats dedicated per year, anybody over that amount would not be able to take the program. The fourth option was to integrate students in grades five, similar to how they have been piloted already at the Glover School, and similarly piloted at all four elementary schools in the last two years in grade four. We feel that combining the students in grade five in English and in French, because all students are taught at least 70% of the day in English, combining those services would be more efficient, and it may be a way in which we could save some teachers by scheduling our teachers who teach French differently. And the last option that we just discussed last week and introduced into the program was one of which a hybrid of capping by school and doing what we already do, which is saying out loud to everybody in the school and everybody in the town that we have so many classes in each school of French per year, and they will remain constant, that the amount of seats that we have in each of those schools will remain constant. And if the school is oversubscribed, we will not increase the enrollment or increase the class. We will keep the classes of French. For example, if there was two at the Cunningham, those two classes of French would be offered each year. It would not change. If there was any extra students in any of the buildings that wanted to continue in French, they would be moved to a separate building, and we would reserve the right to decide where that extra class would go, pending on the location and space availability within our public school, elementary schools. All of these scenarios have been, the first four have been dissected in a lot of detail. We have come up with a preliminary set of strengths and weaknesses for each of those options. The last option that I described to you will be vetted a little more this Thursday morning at our next meeting, and we meet again next Wednesday afternoon as well.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. This one's for Ms. Gormly. "I have heard that the French immersion program is not an added cost to the budget. Is this correct?"
The French immersion program is not an added cost to the budget. There's a misconception that perhaps French immersion teachers are paid differently. All of the teachers in the Milton Public Schools are in a union, and when individuals are hired, we have a contract. The contract, individuals are hired based on their years of experience and their degree level. Again, over the years, individuals have asked to look at the actual purchase orders for the text materials and supplies, and there is no extra cost. Again, the analogy would be, there are 25 children. We would have a teacher in front of those students. We would have text materials and supplies. There is no added cost to the budget for the French immersion program.
Thank you, Ms. Gormly. The next question, "Was the teachers' union approached to reopen their contract? If yes, what was the response? If no, what is the excuse? And when does the teacher's contract expire?" Mr. Pavicek, would you like to take that one?
Get the easy ones, all right. Easy part first, it expires next year. This is, we're entering the third year of a three-year agreement. Was the teachers' union approached to reopen? They were approached to reopen last year. We haven't formally asked them this year, although there have been some informal discussions about the needs of the system, and we're wondering, you know, how we can work together to help each other out, but we don't have anything at the moment. There's not a formal, we can't call them back to the table. You can only say, "Would you like to come back?" Because once you have an agreement, you have an agreement for the term of the agreement. So, we've, there've been some, Ms. Sheridan has had some informal conversations. We're looking for common ground. We're looking for ways that we can help each other out. It's all very preliminary. It's all, we really can't say too much about it, because it is negotiations, and those are of necessity, private matters. They're not public session items. The short answer is, the teachers understand the situation the town is in. We're looking for common ground to how we can deal with it together. But have there been a formal request to reopen negotiations this spring? Not at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Pavicek. The next question, "Why can't we rectify each student's residency annually to address out-of-town students?" Mr. Phelan?
And then, I think the two principals after Mr. Phelan could speak to that, too.
We have done a lot of work regarding the issue of residency in the Milton Public Schools and the town of Milton. We have organized our internal staff to dedicate more time to this issue of enrolling students, and also have reallocated some funds that we have already been expending in other ways to pay a stipend to someone to keep track of and monitor any students that we have believed to be not living in the town. We have successfully, last school year, investigated 120 cases and removed, just in the school year alone, of last school year, over 40 students. Over the summer, we excluded another 10 to 20 in the school year alone. At March 16, 2010, we've already excluded about 30 to 35 students. With that being said, we feel that we need to set up and continue, continually working on setting up an infrastructure that will help us process student enrollment forms, seek to make sure that we enroll students as quickly as possible, identify all the appropriate documents, and graciously and professionally accept every new student into the Milton Public Schools. It's very important to do so. Having an option to review everybody's materials every year is a very cumbersome job, and quite frankly, we don't have the staff to do so. And ironically, when we do get things like mail that comes back, if I have moved from, say, Gulliver Street to Canton Ave, and my mail is coming back to the school is undeliverable, we investigate those folks, and we ask them to prove their residency again, despite the fact if we live in the town and I'm on the same Ma basketball team as they are, I have to ask them for that information. And most of the town folks understand that to be necessary, but some are inconvenienced by it. So, we want to make sure that everybody understands that we are doing this work to ensure to the public and the taxpayers and the parents that we take this role very seriously, that there is work out there to do, and we'll do it. We are debating on doing an interval model of asking everyone to re-enroll, for example, at certain grades every year, so you'd know that when your child hit fourth grade, you would automatically have to re-enroll all your children, eighth grade, 10th grade. We're looking at some sort of a medium ground to have checkpoints to be able to provide that security in a sense that every student enrolled in the Milton Public Schools lives in the town.
And two, two points on the residency. Mr. Phelan mentioned funding, and I mentioned before the additional music teacher. We pay two stipends to two Milton police officers to help work with us on this residency issue. Quite frankly, once we do an investigation, these two police officers visit homes, and they do screening of residencies. And so, one of the Milton police officers is out for half a year on a maternity leave. So, for you to understand the budget, we took the funding that we would have paid that police officer, so we have now one police officer working with us, and we took that position, and we posted it as a stipend position. This is a huge and an important issue to us, so we posted that within the Milton Public School, and a Milton Public School employee who works half-time interviewed, as did four other people, accepted. We appointed the person. They accepted the position, and that person is doing the work. It became, it's, when I referred to the full budget, we're all working full-time. And this was, again, a very time-consuming issue, that we have to be responsive to the public. So, we took the half-year of the Milton Police Officer finances that we had targeted. We hired and were stipending Milton Public School employee who works half-time to do that work for us. We've also published that if anyone wants to call a hotline that we have or call our office if they have any issues or questions or want to give us leads, and we follow up on every one of those issues. Obviously, if it's anonymous, we can't get back to you, but you're probably following the case anyway. And, again, we will accept any kind of information residents want to give us. John?
We can use the 4811.
You can use 617-696-4808 or 4811, but there is an actual number that we'll put on the front of the webpage. I don't remember it right now.
Thank you. And if any other school committee members wish to speak to any of these, just wave. The next question, "Why are all the cuts coming from staff positions and not from other spending, such as supplies, et cetera?" And part two, "Why does it seem that the elementary schools take the biggest hit as opposed to the high school, which is only being cut by $166,000?"
Mr. Gillis is going to start, and then I'll pick up.
Well, I'll start with the first part of the question. Why is most of the cuts coming from the staffing and not the other things? Well, a lot of the other things that we have are not so discretionary, whether it be the lights or the heating of the building, some forms of insurance. We spend significantly below the state average on instructional materials. The Milton Foundation of Education, you know, does help contribute quite a bit to that, and all the folks that support that program, we very much appreciate it. So, we really don't have a whole lot of flexibility with our contracted services and supplies that we use to run the school system. We have to have the tools and the environment in place that's conducive to learning. And since we've whittled that away over the years, we're left looking at staff and increasing class size predominantly. And that's the main reason why you see more people up there than things.
And the second part of that question was? Oh. And to Mr. Gillis's point, the majority of our budget is staffing, is people. And, again, as he indicated, over the years, we've looked at those other areas. When you think of it in that presentation, $55,000 of a professional development budget, and $75,000 that we think we're going to be able to save in electricity. So, there aren't, again, if there were other areas that we could go to, other parts of the budget, we would tap those. When we sit down as a leadership team, in the Milton Public Schools, there are 4,000 children. 2,000 of them are at the elementary school level, 1,800, 1,900, and then the other 2,000 children at the middle and high. We sit down as a team, and we divide the cuts. We do them fairly. Again, if you're an elementary parent, if you're an elementary advocate, again, you feel for every one of those cuts. If, again, we prioritize the classroom teachers, and we decided how to fairly make the cuts and the reductions.
Thank you. This is, actually, I think is a follow-up to a previous question about French. It says, "If French cost per pupil is the same as English, how does capping French save any costs?"
When Mr. Phelan meets with this group, and how many in the audience are in the world language group? Absolutely. Eight, seven, or eight of the individuals, they put a tremendous amount of time into this issue. It's part of the Milton Public Schools, the world language program. And, again, capping, there would be no savings with capping. The children in front of us, and as long as we're saying it in the spirit of full disclosure, the committee knows how I feel. I feel like this is a public school, and, again, to cap or to have a lottery and say, "We both pay our taxes, but your child," its name was picked out of a hat, and your child wasn't. So, I know that Mr. Phelan has brought back to the committee how I personally feel about capping or lottery. And 100 years ago, in the Milton Public Schools, we did try for one year to have a lottery and capped, and it didn't work. And so, I've told Mr. Phelan, again, it's an option that's on the board, and we're open to all options, and look at savings. And we did cap, and the people who didn't get into the program came forward. You pay your taxes, you pay your taxes, and no one wanted their child's destiny decided by picking out of a hat. And so, again, it wouldn't be fair if I didn't tell you how I felt about capping, and, but again, we're putting every option up on the board.
Thank you. Those are well-written questions. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment or ask a question? You can either come forward, or I can come to you with the microphone.
It's Amy Crummy. Seems to me like it's pretty clear we're not going to be getting any stimulus money, maybe anytime soon, or next year, or whenever. The class sizes are already high. Nobody wants them to get any higher than they are. You're looking at taking away teachers. Sounds to me like it smells like an override coming soon. How does that happen? How does that get initiated after the board committee budget decisions?
Well, Milton, I can speak to that briefly, and then anyone else can jump in. Mr. Lovely, will you?
I was going to ask you to repeat the question. I'm afraid I didn't hear it.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, the question is, with all the cuts that we're discussing that have been raised tonight, Amy said that it sounded like maybe we need to have an override, and she wondered what the process was to go forward with that. Who initiates it, and how does that happen? Would you like to speak to that, Mr. Lovely?
How does an override happen?
If your problems happen, how does that process start?
More or less like the Second World War. It starts with you. No, I understand. And we've had, we, I think Mary Gormly often speaks about our former treasurer, Kevin Sorgy, who stood up at town meeting and said, "You know, if you really, if you think about things with Prop 2.5 and the limitation or the cap on the growth that we can apply to our tax base, when you compare that with the increasing costs every year, which exceed the 2.5 percent, and since there's very little growth in Milton, it's because you can raise the tax base 2.5 percent plus growth." Well, we don't have a lot of room for growth, as you know, and it's very hard to increase growth within the town. So, accordingly, I guess Kevin Sorgy's view was, and I think it was a fair one, that every couple of years, it catches up with you, and you have to have an override. And we have had, I don't know, seven, nine? It seems like, no, nine, I think. I know I've been involved with many of you on many of them. But the way it starts is a concerned group of citizens gets together and forms a committee, basically not unlike an election campaign, very intense, usually is a very short-term process, because you have to go, there can only be a certain amount of time between the referendum and the town meeting approval, and as a result, it's pretty intense. And frankly, people are getting tired of overrides. If you would have asked me, and I've been doing this now for nine years, plus 10 before that, working on overrides and the like, I'd say the likelihood of an override this year is zero or close to it. I just don't think we have the appetite for an override.
In addition to that, the selectmen have to vote to put it on the ballot. So, that's the other piece that goes with it. But it usually is initiated by citizens or committees in the town. Yes. Thank you for that question.
Hi, my name is Todd Greenwood, and I had a question. Recently, in town meeting, they passed the wind turbine that's to be constructed, and there was approximately, I think, $7 million over the 15- or 20-year lifespan of that project that would be savings to the town. And part of that money would be money that would be gained by selling electricity to the grid. Are there any factors for the money that would be used for electricity for the schools that would be offset by that windmill? And were those numbers factored into the budget or the upcoming budgets? So, that's my question.
Well, I can begin that, but seeing that the windmill hasn't even been built yet, we're not going to get any money this year. we're not going to get any money this year for it. But in future years, yes. Glenn, do you want to speak to it?
The money from that comes to the town as a special revenue. It comes in a revenue fund. It'll be determined by, eventually by town meeting, exactly towards what purpose that goes. Basically, what will happen is we will still pay our electric bill, our gas bills, our utility bills as schools. And the money from, that is generated from the sale of the power from the windmill, goes into a special fund. At a town meeting, when the town meeting decides how to spend all of their money on different things, this will be one more piece of that pie. There are various things being floated from, you know, putting some of it towards a capital stabilization fund, all sorts of different things. People have all sorts of interesting ideas of what to do with that revenue stream, dedicated for this, dedicated for that. Ultimately, it's going to be town meeting that decides where it goes and how.
My question is concerning the budgets, and in reviewing the budgets for the past few years, it's, sorry.
Could you just speak up just a little bit?
I'm sorry. I'm like the quiet talker on Seinfeld. My question is concerning the budgets, and over the past few years, I've noticed that we have a lot of these presentations that the school committee says and the school administration says, "We need so much money to run our schools." And the warrant committee and the town, is it? Okay, sorry. Well, that's, yeah. It seems in the last few years, we've had these kind of meetings, that the school committee and the school administration says, "We need X millions of dollars to run the system." And then town meeting and the warrant committee comes up with a figure that could be 1.5, 2.9 million dollars less than what's needed. What can we do as citizens, as parents of schoolchildren, to influence both the warrant committee and town meeting to say that we really need to fully fund the school budgets based on what you say you need to run the schools?
Mr. Lovely?
Well, for many years, the mindset in the town has been to assert that the warrant committee is at fault because the monies aren't equitably allocated. And that's probably the furthest thing from the truth. The fact is, the warrant committee is tasked with one mission only, and that mission is to come up with a balanced budget, given the projected revenues that we anticipate for the coming year. They work very, very hard at that, as I'm sure everyone here knows. They meet endless meetings. But ultimately, they have to come down and make a decision as to how to allocate the funding to accommodate all of the different services that the town has to provide to its residents. And inevitably, particularly in a circumstance like this year, where there is no growth, any significant growth in our tax base, and the cost of everything is going up, inevitably everybody gets hit. I think the warrant committee, in fairness, tried very hard this year to be equitable in the allocation of the hits, if you will, to our budget. To answer the second part of your question, what can you do aside, unfortunately, aside from advocating for an override, which is extremely difficult and a somewhat of an onerous effort, you can certainly lobby your town meeting members if you feel the budget is inequitably allocated. I think the likelihood of finding success in the town meeting floor of any significant change from the warrant committee recommendations is both historically and realistically unlikely this year. But I want to be very clear that, at least in my judgment, it's not the warrant committee's fault. The shortcoming we have is we don't have enough revenue, and we have to stretch it further and further every year. I think we do that pretty successfully across the town, both the selectmen and the school board is able to do it, but it's a very difficult task, so, and I don't know if that answers the question.
Yes.
I want to apologize. I didn't mean to use it as an insult to the warrant committee. I didn't, I understand that they are very, very limited with the taxes that we have, and I don't mean it as a criticism in any means. But I looked at the numbers of the budgets of the last few years, and in the last few years, the schools' budgets have been cut on a regular basis. And I don't know what else we can do. And I know the override question is a huge issue, and a lot of people are very, very opposed to it, but I think that we, as citizens, have to understand that our schools continually are cut, and class sizes increase and options are decreased. And it's very frustrating. And I don't mean to criticize at all the warrant committee, because I know that they're all volunteer people and they do a really good job, but I'm wondering if there's anything that we can do to kind of influence a better budget for the schools to work with.
Your turn.
My name is Mary.
Let me try one. Part of the issue is, of course, the school department budget is so much bigger than any other budget in the town. I mean, we're talking about a $34, $35 million budget. The next largest department in the town is probably the police at around $5 million. DPW has water and sewer in it, which is something different, because that's not funded by the tax rate. That's funded directly off the water and sewer bills. But really, there are only four big budgets in the town: police, fire, DPW, and us. And we're bigger than the other three put together. So when we say we need $2.5 million to carry it forward, and the warrant committee says, "You're only going to get $350,000 or something like this," that gap looks enormous. But when you get down to as a percent of budget, it's happening on the other levels, too. I mean, the police are going to require a certain amount to put there, to bring their budget forward, and they're only getting a percentage of that as well. The warrant committee has been careful of late to really try to keep those percentages somewhat equitable. It looks like a lot more for the schools, because in absolute dollars, it is a lot more for the schools. I mean, it's, we're the biggest budget. Everything looks bigger when we do it. And the flip side of that, too, is people say, "Well, you're spending so much money on, and everything, you must be wasting it, because, you know, you're spending so much money." But again, that's one of the problems of being basically half the town's budget in one department. It really just, everything looks bigger when we do it this way. So it's not, you know, that everyone else is getting everything they want, and all the cuts from the town are coming out of the schools, but certainly, you know, the numbers look bigger for us.
Mrs. Kelly?
Can I just add? I agree with everything that's been said thus far. One of the things that we have asked is for other budgets to be posted in as much level of detail as the schools are. And I think that would be very helpful for everyone in the community to understand that every department is in the same boat. We do a lot of, you know, explicit details as to what we're going to cut if we don't get certain funding. It would be great to hear that same level of detail from all the other departments and to see it in writing on the website. So if you're a town meeting member, I would encourage you to ask the board of selectmen or the warrant committee to be doing those kinds of things.
Thank you. Question right here.
Thank you, Earl Fay. First, it's a lot easier being on this side of the microphone, I think, than you folks. And I have to say, first, thank you, Mr. Lovely, for all these years of service. This is your last call with me. Thank you. It's not pretty, for sure, but that being said, I'm really more concerned about the next year. And I know we're talking about, you know, this fiscal year, and in my mind, that really means the 2010, '11 school year, but it's the next year that I'm even more concerned about. And some of the conversations I've had with Mr. Pavlicek, you know, really gives me pause when the stimulus money isn't there and so on. And so for anybody who's thinking overrides, I think that's the year to think about it, and even then, it'll be a serious challenge. But it pains me a great deal to see stimulus money plugging holes, and all the communities are doing it, and frankly, I don't know if we have any other choice. But that being said, if there was any possibility of special education stimulus money truly going to something related to special education, that might be an investment for the future. And when we think about positions possibly being cut and how that can impact performance, in some ways, maybe we have to bite the bullet knowing about the next year. But I'd like to see some thought towards social skills, and I know this has been brought up, but if the body of special ed students across all disciplines had more confidence in themselves, were more included in their peer groups because they have the social skills to do that, just as all students who participate in sports, their performance improves, there's no question in my mind that if resources could be put to that end, not English, not math, but to social skills in general, that I'm convinced that performance district-wide would raise across all disabilities, and particularly the middle school, which might be the most awkward social time of anybody's life. So I'm just putting that out there, and maybe that would be something, and we have terrific staff, and that we could invest for those. Thank you.
And to Mr. Fay's point, we have a meeting Thursday morning, a result of the PAC meeting with Ms. Yuretsky and a small parent group, and looking at developing a team of teachers, again, putting in a new program, where is the time, but investigating programs across the state or nationally, and how we could integrate those programs. So it's an excellent point that was brought out at the PAC and now at the budget meeting, and we'll keep you abreast of the plans for that. Thank you, Mr. Fay. I think it's 9:00 or 9:30 Thursday morning.
My name is Bill White. Just a quick comment, I'm a veteran of a number of overrides. I agree with Mr. Lovely and also want to salute you for your service to the town. I've been in an awful lot of battles with you, all for the good. Great presentation tonight. Thank you for all your work. Ms. Gormly, I like the presentation, but I have to endorse the top 10, very effective, particularly for us who don't have a great attention span on all these details. Just an observation, to Mr. Fay's point about next year's budget being even worse. And currently, you know, as a veteran of a number of the override campaigns, it worries me that we can even have a chance next year. And so while, Mr. Pavlicek, you talked about not wanting to negotiate in public, I would just like to ask the school committee to consider reopening or approaching the unions to reopen negotiations this year around. It's not because, and again, I hear this from Democrats and Republicans, from liberals and from parents all across the town, we're not anti-teacher. We're pro-education, but it's about shared sacrifice, and we're in a historic time of unbelievable cuts. I don't know anybody who's gotten a raise. So we're not even asking them, you know, to take a cut. We're asking maybe for a wage freeze or a 1%, something a little bit more rational. We're also asking our teachers if they would come to the table on GIC. I'm a member of GIC, and I think the health care is pretty darn good. Yeah, our co-pays are a little bit greater, but, I mean, it's not sustainable. So I ask the school committee, as you guys, respectfully negotiate with our friends in the teachers' union, to really emphasize that we can't keep doing it anymore. We can't keep doing overrides for Harvard Pilgrim, for Blue Cross Blue Shield. We need to have shared sacrifice from our teachers' unions, as well as all the unions, and we salute John Phelan and Mary Gormly for taking a wage freeze last year. Thank you.
And the principals.
Did anyone want to speak to GIC? No, I just want to, does anyone of the school committee want to speak to GIC at all?
Just one quick point. The school committee does not negotiate GIC or health insurance with teachers. That has to be done on a townwide basis. So it's a board of selectmen with a collaborative group of all the employee unions. They have been meeting. They have not come to an agreement on health care. I would point out that there is movement in the legislature this spring for certain municipal rights, I might call them, as a result of the budget crisis this year. And one of the things being talked about is allowing the cities and towns to have a certain amount of flexibility in plan design, which is to say, you can't dictate what percentage of health care someone will pay, but you can limit the number of available plans and then negotiate the percentage of the cost splitting. There is talk in the legislature of giving that right to the municipalities. The state has it, as Bill knows, and I know with GIC, I'm also in GIC. As state employees, you don't have the right at all to negotiate health insurance. It's taken out of collective bargaining. But what they're looking at, what the legislature is looking at for municipalities is possibly allowing more flexibility in the kinds of offerings that a city and town can offer without going to collective bargaining over the actual plans. So there is some movement afoot to give communities a little more leverage. And if you are interested in that, I would urge you to contact your legislature, your legislators, and tell them that this is something you would be in favor of. I would also, while I'm telling you to contact your legislators, when we're talking about local aid, the governor's proposal was basically held local aid harmless this year. The legislature is talking about a 4% cut. There are people in the legislature who don't want to hold local aid harmless, some because there isn't money, some for other reasons, because they'd rather fund other things. I think as people in towns especially, more than cities, cities get money from a variety of different pots, but towns get local aid, and that's about it. If you were interested in arguing for local aid, I would also suggest you contact your local legislators to say, "Preserving local aid is a big issue for us," because, again, they need to hear from people in their constituency, tell them what's important. It's one thing for them to think something, but if they don't hear it from lots of constituents, it doesn't sink in. You know, lobbyists don't do it. It's voters that do it. So if you're interested in those things that are in the legislature, it's certainly worthwhile to pay attention to what's on up there. There's a lot of things on the plate right now, and it never hurts to make a phone call and weigh in.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlicek.
Lyndalee, could I just add one thing? Excuse me, sir. I agree very much with what Bill White just said. It's very disappointing to me, and I guess I can say this a little more easily, because I'm the lamest of ducks. But I'm disappointed, frankly, that we haven't made a more significant effort to really press on the GIC. If you look at our town budget and try to assess what one of the more significant impacts is, frankly, it's that our, the proportion of health care benefits that we pay for our employees relative to other communities is dramatically higher. And that's a cost that we continue to bear every year. And I know it's very difficult for anybody to give up something that they have, and it's antithetical to anybody in a union position to give up hard-fought-for benefits. On the other hand, at some point along the line, you have to recognize that if you want to protect your position and protect the positions of your colleagues and so you don't have to continue to cut teachers, recognizing that the teachers we cut are the young teachers, those with shorter service, who are trying to fight their way into the workforce. And who, by the way, are having more and more difficulty on the family level acquiring a home. Many of them will never have the opportunity to acquire a home, unlike our generation and the generations before us. But I think a more significant effort can be made on the part of the town as a whole and the part of the selectmen to reach out to the teachers. The teachers comprise part of the group that has to negotiate with respect to the GIC. But as a practical matter, if the teachers do not participate favorably in that exercise, all of the other unions can participate, and it won't happen. So I am far less hesitant to say that we ought to be much more forthright in approaching the teachers' union again and again, and anybody else who can help in the effort to reduce the costs of health care. Keep in mind that the GIC does not offer us an immediate saving. The differential, really, the benefit of the GIC, is that it helps us forecast reduced premium increases over future years, because the history of the GIC has demonstrated that the premiums under those plans have gone up considerably slower in rate than have the private plans from which we acquire our health insurance. So if you want to know what you can do, aside from advocating for the legislation that Glenn has referred to, you can start knocking on the door of the board of selectmen, knocking on the door of whoever you know who might have influence on those who participate in unions in the town, and try to get them to reconsider coming to the table as opposed to, for example, a pay cut or a reduction in salary. This is one way, I think, that they could help us substantially, and it's really a prospective need. And the increase in co-pay, as to which Mr. White also alluded, is no doubt part of it, but it's relatively speaking, it's probably the easiest way that we can make significant inroads in future savings, or we're going to be fighting the override fight every single year. We just get, we're We just get, we get a little ahead when we have an override, we feel good about ourselves, and then the next year, people say, "Why did we have to cut?" Well, the fact of the matter is, the reason we had to cut is because the override can't sustain us on an ongoing basis year after year. It just doesn't work.
Thank you.
My name is James Mills, and I was very happy to yield some time there to Mr. Lovely's points, because that touched on some of, I think, a critical issue, the role of insurance and the cost of the rises, and the predictability of the rises under the GIC, I think, is perhaps the greatest benefit of trying to bring the town employees into that system, which is something I think we all should try and advocate for. But within that, and my question is also, at present, my understanding is that the contract negotiations with the teaching unions take place every three years. Is that correct? Is there any, not wishing to put you all through more frequent negotiations just for the sake of it, but is there any mileage in considering or moving the unions towards negotiating on an annual or a biannual basis, so that these points could be put to them and to make more of a cooperative relationship, so that the idea of shared sacrifice could be put to them, and the budget could be placed in front of them to see, and to allow for the possibility of negotiations, rather than having to wait for the unions to come to us to say, "Well, we would like to consider a pay freeze or a reduction," or something like that, when they don't have to? Is there any possibility of considering that? Are we allowed to under current law, or whether, as this is a practice, that could be considered to some positive effect for the budget?
Mr. Pavlicek?
We're absolutely allowed to. The law only restricts us to signing a contract that's no more than three years. You can sign contracts of any duration up to three years. And in fact, it works both ways. Sometimes when there's a, as with our current contract, at the first year of it, we saw we were in trouble, and they took a lower rate in the first year, and back-ended a little more in the second and third, and we didn't realize at the time, of course, that you're going to go to hell in a handbasket in the second and third years. But that's one approach. Other approaches, and there have been some, where, you know, when you see a few bad years coming, it often is in the interest of everybody to just say, "Let's do a one-year deal, get this over with, let's see what happens in another year, and come back," or "Do a two-year deal, and let's, you know, we know the next two years is going to be awful. Let's just, you know, cut our losses down and wait to see what that third year is," and, you know, do a two-year deal. All of those things are options, they're always on the table, and they do happen. And especially right now, I think you're seeing more shorter-term contracts than three-year contracts right now. I mean, there are some school districts that are still doing three-year contracts, but I know on the state level, you're seeing one year, and then a two-year, and things like that. There's all, all variations are out there. And the more uncertain times are, the more likely it is that you'll end up on a short-term agreement.
Well, I would like to thank everyone for your thoughtful questions, for coming out, for tuning in from at home. I'd like to thank the administration. Can we give them a huge round of applause? These folks work tirelessly, and when I say tirelessly, they're out every night of the week, I know, because I'm with many of them, many of those nights a week. And they do that with all the love in their heart, and they work for each and every one of our children in the school system, and we are so lucky to have them as our administration. I'd like to thank the school committee members who are all here tonight, and they stole my thunder, Mr. Lovely. I was going to say, too, that this is your last open budget hearing, but we're, many more for you to tune into and watch.
Can I dance?
Yes. So, thank you so much for coming, and have a good night.
Move your chair. Is that good?